Welcome, everybody, to the Forum on Preservation Issues with Candidates for New York City Council District Two. My name is Andrew Berman and I'm the Executive Director of Village Preservation, and I will be moderating tonight's forum. I want to thank our cosponsors for tonight, the East Village Community Coalition and the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative, as well as, of course, all of the candidates who are with us here tonight, who I'll be introducing shortly. I strongly encourage all of the participants to also consider attending our upcoming Preservation Candidates Forum next Wednesday, April 30th at 6:00 PM, for City Council District One, which covers nearly all of Manhattan, south of Houston Street, and the following Wednesday, May 7th, at 6:00 PM, for City Council District Three, which covers Greenwich Village, west of Sixth Avenue, Chelsea, and Hell's Kitchen. You can also view the videos of our Manhattan Borough President and mayoral candidate forums on preservation issues, which we've already held, and a link for all of those, the upcoming and the past forums, will be dropped in the chat for you to access. So, a quick note about the format for tonight before we begin. Each candidate will be allowed a brief opening and closing statement. In between, I'll be asking a series of questions of all candidates. Following that, I'll be asking questions of all candidates chosen from those offered by the audience, so you can drop your questions into the Q and A at any time. All responses from candidates will have enforced time limits, typically around one minute, and the order of responses will change with each question. We plan to wrap by about 7:30 PM. Please note that we are 501(c)(3) organizations, so we are not and cannot, we will not be, and we cannot endorse or recommend candidates. What we can do, however, is provide an opportunity for you to learn more about the candidates, their positions, records, and perspectives, to help inform any decisions you may choose to make. This also means that candidates cannot discuss, that candidates cannot discuss here or provide any information about their campaigns, though that information is, of course, readily publicly available. If you have any technical problems or questions, please just send an email to rsvp@villagepreservation.org, and that email address is going to go in the chat as well, and somebody will respond to that as soon as possible. This forum is being recorded, and the video will be shared with all who registered, as well as with the general public, placed on our website and YouTube page, and the cosponsoring organizations will also be sharing it. So, without further ado, I'm going to first introduce who all the candidates are, and then I will ask them in alphabetical order to give a one-minute opening statement. So, we have Sarah Batshu. Sarah, am I pronouncing your last name correctly? Great. Sarah is a member of Community Board Three. We have Harvey Epstein, who is a State Assembly Member. We have Andrea Gordillo, who's the Chair of Community Board Three. We have Ally Ryan, a community activist and film producer. And we have Anthony Weiner, who is the former U.S. Representative from New York's Ninth Congressional District. So, I'm going to first start with opening statements, and as I said, we're going to go in alphabetical order, so I will start. So, this is one minute, and we will start with Sarah.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us tonight. I wanted to start off just by sharing a bit about where I come from. I'm not a native New Yorker, don't hold it against me, but I originally am from Chicago, which many consider the capital city of architecture. And I grew up going to the waterfront and on the architecture boat tours whenever we had visitors in town. And, you know, part of what made my upbringing special was the place and growing up, you know, in a thriving city. But it also was the people, and I wanted to share that both of my parents were physicians. They were both trained in the city, and they taught me the values of compassion, of care, and of community. And the best lesson is one that I got from my dad, who was a pediatrician for over 40 years. He'd always say that whenever he got a broken arm, which is pretty common as a pediatrician, a good doctor is going to ask why that arm is broken, not just put it in a cast. And so, I think when we think about all the issues that are going on in the city, we need to think about symptoms, and we also need to think about root causes. I'm here to present a bold new vision of leadership and to be part of the next generation of leaders in New York City.
Thank you, Sarah. So, next up is going to be Harvey.
Thank you, Andrew, and thank you, everyone, for joining us. I really want to thank you for letting us talk to you. My name is Harvey Epstein. I've lived in the district for 30 years, raised my kids there. Prior to getting elected in the Assembly, I was a legal services lawyer, representing thousands of New Yorkers across the city. I ran for the Assembly in 2017 and got elected in 2018 because we wanted to make sure that we had all the systemic barriers we were facing in New York, we could manage them, be able to pass really meaningful, impactful legislation on housing, environment, and other justice issues. But I really want to make sure the city follows through on those commitments that we made on the mental health crisis and the affordable housing crisis. And I'm running for City Council to ensure those things that we're trying to do across our state happen actually in New York City and our community. We can continue as is. We need to make sure our city is better for all of us, for my kids and my family, to make sure we have a better, cleaner, healthier New York for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, next up, we have Andrea.
Hi, thanks, everyone. So excited to be here. My name is Andrea Gordillo, and I'm running for City Council in the Second District to bring fresh, bold, and community-driven leadership to our district. I'm the proud daughter of Peruvian immigrants who came to this country with absolutely nothing but the hope of a better life. My father worked in construction. He drove a taxi to make ends meet on one. My mother navigated a new world. She was learning English and raising a family, and they were lucky to achieve the American dream, but that dream feels so much further out of reach for so many of us today. And I've lived here in the East Village for over a decade, and in that time, I've seen our city change in ways that makes it so much harder for working families and for small businesses to thrive. And in an unprecedented affordability crisis with skyrocketing rents, a ballooning climate crisis, disinvestment in our public health, many of us have been left feeling unabandoned. And I'm running for City Council because we need fresh leadership, and the same old political conventions aren't working anymore. And as your labor, as your longtime neighbor and community advocate, I plan to protect what we love about this city, our diverse communities and cultures. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next, we have Ally Ryan. You have to unmute yourself, Ally.
Thanks. Okay. Well, I just want to say, thank you for having us tonight, Andrew, and Village Preservation, as well as the Lower East Side Historic Preservation Initiative and the East Village Community Coalition. My name is Ally Ryan, and I know many of you know me because I've run before and I've sat here. This is my third time in participating. My husband and I have lived in this district for decades, and we're raising our daughters in the historic arts, music, and environmental communities of the East Village. I am a mom, activist, artist, and documentary filmmaker, and our family is representative of the working-class union families being driven out of the city. Twenty years ago, I got involved in politics to call for more bike lanes and to renew the community garden leases. Over the past five years, I've been a part of grassroots people-power coalitions with my neighbors to fight open New York. And, well, let me just finish, transportation alternatives
Got to wrap up.
to, that were agendas that were carried out by our
Okay.
status quo elected officials, and I'm
I'll stop you there, Ally. I'm sure you'll have a chance in the question portion to raise that. And then, we have Anthony Weiner.
Well, thank you, Andrew. I don't know if I've ever spoken for less than a minute in my life, so this might be the first time. Look, I'm running for City Council because I come from a very different place than my colleagues do. I think they would be excellent City Council members, but I would be better. Part of the reason is, I think that for hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers who were Democrats, they stayed home in 2024 because they didn't think that Democrats were fundamentally solving the problems of our city. And I agree with them, and so I'm doing my best to try to bring some ideas. So, it comes to preservation and housing. I mean, look, I have a couple of biases. One is active over passive. Don't wait for problems to arise in our community. Try to do the best you can to do planning in the best sense of the word. Second, diversity is better than homogiality. Like, we need places for small manufacturing. We need places for housing, but we need open spaces. We need parks. We need beautiful areas. And that's where I, and I also believe that loud and rich people shouldn't have more voices than regular New Yorkers. Those are my biases, and I'll have a chance to flesh those out as we have a chance to deal with your questions. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. So, we're going to start with the first question, and this first question, we're going to do in the reverse order, so reverse alphabetical order. And that question is, tell us what your record is on historic preservation issues, which is the primary focus of this forum. Tell us anything that you, any historic preservation efforts that you've supported, work that you've done, anything that you've worked for or towards. And so, we're going to start with Anthony Weiner, and again, it'll be one minute.
Thanks. Well, look, I mean, when I was a City Councilman, I did this job. I put on my campaign literature vote, "Reelect Anthony Weiner," because I've done this job before. And when I was in the City Council, I represented a community in Southern Brooklyn where I recognized that preservation was a way to develop a community. We had an iconic place in Southern Brooklyn that many of you may know, Lundie's. It was at the time, it was Spanish colonial architecture. At the time, it was back in the day of our parents. It was the largest restaurant in the world, in fact. And some people suggested, well, we should develop that site to take, you know, it was too big to be a restaurant anymore, and I recognized that, no. Frankly, preservation, anchoring a community in beautiful things, anchoring a community in things that hearken back to a different time, making a place a destination because of the beauty of their community, is a development strategy in and of itself. It's one of the things I was very proud of, led to landmarking of that building, and ultimately, it led to the rejuvenation of a whole community that had been stagnant for some time.
Thank you. So, next, same question is Ally Ryan.
So, thank you for this question. This is, so, a fun fact about me. One of my first jobs out of college was to, was data entry, to enter historic landmark properties into a database in Virginia. I actually spent six months working on it, and it was my, I had taken architectural history classes in college. I have a minor in art history. So, it gave me the opportunity to learn more in detail about historic landmarks. Since then, being, living in New York City, I have been very, I was active to oppose the SoHo-NoHo rezoning, and I came from the perspective of being an artist and saying that we needed to preserve, that Lower Manhattan is living history and that we needed to preserve the historic properties that are here.
Thank you, Ally. Andrea.
Sure, thanks. So, as I alluded to a little bit earlier, you know, I'm a daughter of immigrants, and so I understand the power of history in shaping our lives and in making rooms for everybody, empowering our communities. And this community is no different, right? We are home to a number of civil rights, women's labor struggles, immigrant struggles. And I've worked to advance cultural preservation initiatives, in particular, in my role as a worker at the Luis Cida Center, at the Clemente Soto Vélez, actually collaborating with Village Preservation in many of those iterations through public dialogue, through public forums, spotlighting and honoring Latino legacies through oral histories, reclaiming our histories through film and public dialogue, all sorts of interventions in our public spaces, whether that means street festivals or festivals in our community gardens. I've done, I've done a lot to make opportunities for working people and communities in this neighborhood. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Harvey.
Thank you, Andrew, and thank you for the question. So, you know, I've done a lot of work in this neighborhood around preservation. Well, before I got elected to the Assembly, I was Chair of the Community Board. We talked about protecting the neighborhood. We've seen out-of-scale development happening. In 2002, when I became Chair, we created a task force to look at preserving a lot of our neighborhoods, and that resulted in the 2008 rezoning of our community, which protected a lot of the structures and the buildings across the community. And Ally mentioned the SoHo-NoHo rezoning, and I would raise concerns around losing affordable housing and that, and wrote an op-ed that was, I think, published in the E.V. Grieve, raising those concerns around protecting the affordable tenants and the rent-stabilized tenants were around, raising the red flag that rezoning doesn't have to be always, you know, over-scale development doesn't always have to work. In Albany, when we talked about getting rid of 12 F.A.R., we talked about how we preserve the existing, you know, buildings that are preserved, and we did that through the legislation that we passed last year as well. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Harvey. And finally, Sarah. You're unmute.
I am, you know, blessed to work at an organization in Brooklyn, Fifth Avenue Committee, where I am one of our representatives to something called the Gowanus Oversight Task Force. And it's a task force that was created as part of the rezoning of the Gowanus neighborhood to ensure that that rezoning resulted in equitable outcomes for a community that had lost a lot of diversity and certainly a lot of affordable housing opportunities for people to call the neighborhood home. And so, in my role there, I am part of ensuring the preservation of Gowanus as an arts and culture-rich neighborhood, including building and developing new affordable artist space, adaptive reuse projects, you know, for those artist spaces, as well as housing. And so, making sure really that the city and, you know, all of the agencies in the alphabet soup of the city live up to the commitments of ensuring that that, you know, industrial history, the history of the canal are honored through the rezoning process.
Okay, great. All right. So, next question, going to mix up the order here again. How would you help retain and support small independent businesses and cultural institutions, which are so vital in our neighborhoods and of which we've lost so many in recent years? So, again, one minute, and this time, I'm going to start with Andrea.
Sure. Thank you for the question. This is an enormous and important task at hand. I have a lot of different initiatives and plans to address this. I think we need to get serious about commercial rent regulations, and I would be thrilled and honored to reintroduce the Commercial Rent Stabilization Guidelines Boards in the City Council and take on that fight. Obviously, we will need partnership in Albany in order to really give it some teeth and make sure that we are instituting a vacancy tax, particularly on some of the smaller, some of the smaller venues and small businesses that we have that are, you know, under 500 square feet. But I would also really want to champion a Small Business and Cultural Institutions Legacy Fund that would help support some of our institutions and small businesses that have been around longer than 25 years and give them the special protections and support that they need.
Great. Thank you. Sarah, you're next.
As the daughter, not only of physicians, but physicians who were the owners of their private practice and small business owners, this is, you know, a very personal question to me. I think many small business owners really struggle when it comes to finding an affordable space like Andrea. I think this is something that the city and state have a huge role in playing. One of the solutions that I think is most powerful and would love to partner with our representatives in Albany to pass would be a commercial vacancy tax. I think it's a shame that, right now, landlords are incentivized to keep many spaces in our community vacant so they can write it off, and I think it should be the other way around. I think that they should pay a penalty when a space is left vacant for too long, particularly, you know, spaces that were promised to be community facility spaces and, you know, ground floor retail spaces that our community desperately needs and that many entrepreneurs would love to have. I also know that small business owners struggle oftentimes when they're the first time, you know, small business owner, first in their family, so making sure we have a dedicated point of contact at the Department of Small Business Services to navigate licensing and permitting.
Thank you very much. Ally.
So, as many artists are small business owners, and I also want to add to follow up on the other question that my husband is a filmmaker, and he's documented the Lower East Side and Lower Manhattan. And, but with that influence, that for small businesses, we need to recognize we've had chronic storefronts. So, the Commercial Rent Stabilization Act that Andrea wants to introduce, that's very similar to the Residential Rent Guidelines Board. So, that would mean that the rent will constantly be going up. And a lot of the small business, a lot of the storefronts we have here have been chronically empty for decades because they were bought as investment properties in 2008 time period. And so, we need to be able to negotiate rent down.
Great. Anthony.
You know, one of the things that we did to go in the opposite direction was government, in a random, chaotic way, went into the marijuana business and had a lot of legal and illegal marijuana stores on our neighborhood shopping strips, which was not conducive to families coming and shopping. Some of the things that I would do, and I publish these in some of my books of ideas. One, I would make it so much easier for New Yorkers to shop locally. I would create something called shopNYC.com, where if you put in where you live, what you're looking for, we connect you with a local business, and we might even come up with a system where people deliver on foot rather than on bike to bring it right to your doorstep, so you can compete with the Amazons of the world. Second, as a pure aesthetic question, but also as a safety question, no more solid steel roll-down gates in front of us, our stores. Storekeepers put a lot of effort into decorating their windows or making them pretty. Then they make these solid steel gates that make the streets forbidding at night, or canvases for graffiti. I would ban those and make sure that at least 50% of a window is visible, if not for aesthetic reasons, then for public safety reasons. That's just a couple of ideas.
Great. And last but not least, Harvey.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew, and I think we should spend a lot of time talking about the nonprofits. You know, when the Fourth Arts Block 20 years ago, or 25 years ago, was going to lose, I really stood up to make sure that Giuliani and then Bloomberg didn't take away our art institutions. And the same thing we're going to focus on today. We were able to get Charles back into a nonprofit hands after Giuliani sold that building to a for-profit entity. We need to put resources and money and time into ensuring that we have vibrant cultural spaces there. That's a critical thing that we need to do. The other thing I think we've talked about is, we talked a lot about small businesses. We haven't talked about what small businesses need. They need legal and policy support. They need places to go. They need lawyers to have access to. They need loans and grants, and those are critical. We have, we created Essex Market to help a small step in between a larger step on businesses. Those things need to continue. That's exactly what we need to be doing for our small businesses to make sure they survive.
Thank you very much. All right. So, next question. Many initiatives geared towards addressing our, many initiatives geared towards addressing our city's housing affordability problems involve stripping away local zoning and landmark protections to create more and bigger market-rate, unaffordable housing. City of Yes was one example. The idea being that by building more housing, no matter how expensive, it will trickle down in its benefits of affordability to everyone. Do you agree or disagree with this trickle-down approach? And if you disagree, how so? And what would your approach be? And this time, we will start with Ally.
Okay. And I just want to quickly say that City Council actually passed a law back in 2009 to ban the roll-down gates, and they're, so we're not supposed to have roll-down gates that are solid. They can have, they can be see-through by 2026, just to be clear. In regard to your question, I actually testified against the City of Yes. It did not include anything about affordable homeownership, and this is something I have repeatedly called for, that we, and I've advocated for Mitchell Lama-like housing. If we're going, if we're going to encourage people to live and work here and settle down and have families, we need to be able to enable them to live here for the long term, not have studio apartments or one-bedroom apartments. We need two-bedroom apartments and three-bedroom apartments to be able to meet that need.
Thank you. Same question to Harvey.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of things we should be talking about. Example in Albany is the faith-based housing bill, where they talk about trying to take old places of worship and try to demolish them and build high-rises. And the idea is really antithetical to what we need. What we need to do is focus on affordable housing, and that bill, they talk about 35% of the F.A.R. being set aside for non-housing-based issues. They're only setting aside 20% of the development of housing, which means maybe of the whole building, 15% is going for affordable housing. That's going in the wrong direction. We need to focus on real affordable housing, and I've talked about that many times, about, and Ally mentioned Mitchell Lamas. We need to create a new Mitchell Lama. We haven't done that in 50 years. There's state money available to do that. We need to talk about preserving our HGFCs, our low-income co-ops, and how we do that. We need to expand and protect our rent-stabilized tenants in any way possible and create opportunities on the city level to extend, especially when expiring used 421A and other park. There are a lot of things we can do to expand affordable housing today that the city can control.
Okay. Anthony.
Yeah, I mean, listen, there's two basic models. One is that government does it and pays for it with taxpayer money, and the other is the market does it. Obviously, I would prefer there to be the former, but increasingly, we rely upon the latter. In answer directly to your question, I'm not interested in market rate, but I am interested in people above the low-income level. I think we need to create a ladder of housing for people. I don't think people were intended to stay in public housing generationally. I think creating a second tier, a Mitchell Lama, but also a Nehemiah, these types of things that we figure out ways not only to have for the very poorest, but for the aspirational middle class. But I'll say something else here. I think it is naive to believe that without using a marketplace model, that we are going to get more, more units of affordable by having zero market rate. I don't think that's realistic. The market rate, we might not think it's very helpful for our constituents, but it does carry the freight very often for carrying more affordable units, and so I'm not going to be myopic about that.
Next, Sarah.
We are in a housing crisis, emphasis on crisis. That means we need an all-of-the-above approach. Building more housing is great, but it can't be the only thing. It's not a silver bullet. I think, like Ally, we want families to stay here and call New York City home. A lot of the apartments that we have now where families could live, we have people who are roommates, students, young people, people who can't afford to live on their own. And so, building housing, new housing, even if it's a studio or one bedroom, frees up some of the housing that right now is being used by folks who would otherwise live alone. But I also support, as a rent-stabilized tenant, the only renter who has never owned a home in this panel right now. I believe in strengthening tenant protections. I organize tenants every day in the work that I do. I am supporting a rent freeze for rent-stabilized tenants and reforms the Rent Guidelines Board. I think we also need to think about a social, you know, Social Housing Development Authority, which a state has been considering as well.
Thank you. And last but not least, Andrea.
Thank you. So, yeah, as everybody mentioned, fixing our housing crisis is a very complex issue and one that I'm committed towards working towards. And everybody should afford to live and thrive in this city, and building more is a part of that, and I'm supporting that, but I want to make sure that your voices are heard. And as your councilperson, I will, I will work with you to make sure that your concerns and your voices are being heard and listened to. I'm a Community Board Chairperson. I'm a professional listener, and I understand how to take the concerns and a diversity of voices into consideration when making decisions that impact our neighborhoods. And while we might not agree on every single thing, that's okay because I know that one thing that my neighbors hate more than a politician that they disagree with is one that won't be honest with them. And so, building housing is not the only way to fix our crisis as well, right? Some folks alluded to this, but I will work to lower costs. I will, I do want to take on private scouting. I want to make life more affordable in our neighborhoods. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So, here's the next question. There's been a huge documented drop in landmark designations by the city in recent years, especially in our neighborhoods in Lower Manhattan. Do you see this as a problem? And if so, if you were the City Council member, how would you try to address this? And we're going to start with Harvey on this one.
Yeah, Andrew, it's a good question. I think a good example is New York Eye near that historic building that we've been trying to get landmarked. I think the idea of losing that building means that we will lose the opportunity forever to have that historic building in our community. And I know people talk about rezonings and building, 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 and I think we need more housing. It's critical. We also need to preserve community institutions that we've had. And so, in places like that, or Beth Israel Hospital, if we just demolish those buildings and build, you know, 80, 20 market-rate buildings, I think it's going to result in further displacement. We need to be thoughtful about more preservation that works for our community. We don't have to preserve every building. Not every building is a historic site, of course. But for the ones that are, we need to work towards that. And I believe New York Eye near is a perfect example of that. That institution, you know, places where my daughter and my wife have gone in eye care, places where 40,000 people a year ago, it's a critical place for our community, and places like that need to be preserved, and we need to do things like that for our city.
Okay, great. Next is Sarah.
I think, you know, to encourage and support preservation efforts, we need to push for increased LPC funding, funding, you know, also for the preservation of sites, expand landmark surveys into some of the underserved communities. I know that's an issue. I've spoken with Laura, who runs EVCC, one of our cosponsors tonight, about. I also think we need to strengthen enforcement mechanisms to, you know, prevent demolition by neglect. As somebody who works in housing, I see that often. There are so many buildings in our community, which, you know, are architecturally interesting and important, maybe even historically important, but because of the fact of who owns those buildings, we see them fall into disrepair. We see the tenants, whether they're businesses or residents pushed out by that neglect and effectively demolition by neglect. So, that's something I absolutely would love to partner with our sponsors here tonight and achieving as the next council member in District Two.
Thank you. Anthony.
Yeah, I think a couple of reasons why I think preservation efforts have been on, had been on the decline. One is fundamentally, as politicians, we're not incentivized to think 20 or 30 years down the road. We get elected every couple of years. It's a structural problem that makes getting people to visualize a community later on, and we do this all the And we do this all the time. We make zoning changes for the problems we have today, and we don't realize what we might be creating tomorrow. Perfect example is the way we got rid of all our light manufacturing, because I said, we'll love a manufacturer again. And then we had to react. And I actually ran a countertop company out in the Navy Yard where it was like, okay, let's figure out a place for us to expand, and we couldn't do it. But the other problem that we have, very frankly, is we had a bunch of years of Republican mayors. We had a bunch of years of mayors that had, you know, they came from perspective of whoever is the wealthiest, we were gonna listen to, and it became hard for city council members to stand up to that. I get back to what I said in my opening statement. I believe that being a good council member for this district is not listening to the loud and the rich, but listening to middle-class people, listening to local voices, and sometimes saying no to the loudest voice.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrea.
So I just, sorry, I was on mute. Yeah, so I just want to reiterate a bit about what I was mentioning in my previous statement about community feedback and listening to a diversity of voices. I think it's important when it comes to landmark preservation, landmark applications in our district, like taking a real consideration as to the feasibility, the financial planning, the capacity that the agency is able to serve these applicants is, is top of mind for me. And while, you know, as somebody who has stewarded a very old building that was run by a community of color, we have a lot of concerns about the feasibility of those things. So we really have to have an equity perspective when we're, when we're considering this. But overall, you know, I would want to have a, a community-driven process as it relates to, to additional landmarkings, whether that's, you know, New York Ioneer or any of other major applications.
Thank you. And last but not least, Ally.
So when, in thinking about this, overall, the mayor decide, the mayor is the one who decides what their philosophy for historic preservation and the landmarks commission. I think it's great that you last week hosted the, had the mayors on, the mayoral candidates on to hear what, what their thought, what they thought of historic preservation. And I think it was very telling who was not, who did not participate. I know that, that influences me on who I vote for for mayor. But it's really, there's also a false narrative that history, having historic buildings limit, and thinking the Soho-NoHo rezoning, that limits how building new construction. But it, having the historic buildings actually saves rent-stabilized apartments. I still go back to Eleventh Street and the town, the tenant buildings that were destroyed to make way for a hotel.
Thank you, Ally. All right. Next question. What role do you think historic, what role do you think historic preservation plays in our neighborhoods and our city? And how do you think it either complements or bumps up against the need for growth and the need for greater affordability? Where would it fit into your thinking and your prioritization? And this time we're gonna start with Anthony.
Yeah, it's, when you're dealing with real estate, it is to some degree a zero-sum game. You're gonna constantly, the next council member is gonna constantly be listening to competing demands for land, competing demands for the sidewalks, competing demands for the street. That's the job. But here's my philosophy. My philosophy is that we can't all be one, we can't be a city of one thing. The very wealthy and the very poor that service them. We can't be a hollowed-out economy, nor can we be a hollowed-out neighborhood. There are places for pocket parks. There are places for high-rises. There are places for churches. And so one of the things that I have proposed is that, look, a lot of the real estate that's gonna be developed in our neck of the woods is going to be going north and south, up and down. We don't have big swaths of land waiting to be developed. So if you want to help a church, you want to help a cultural institution, let them sell their air rights in, in return for helping them preserve something on the ground. Not everywhere, but on boulevards, on open streets where you might be able to, to go up. But in terms of this conflict, it's gonna be perpetual, and you better elect a tough city council member to stand up to that.
Thank you. Next is Andrea.
So to me, cultural preservation is an essential component to preservation overall. And we can't preserve our cultures in our neighborhoods if nobody can afford to live here anymore. So for me, balancing both growth and preservation is one in the same. And we're living in a time right now where we have to really seriously reconcile with those things. I understand that. I'm a woman. I'm a daughter. I'm a Latina, daughter of immigrants. I'm a Latina and like, people like myself, people like in my community have been sought to be erased by many governments before me and many to come. So we really have to think through how, how we're gonna be preserving our cultures and, and building, and not just building, but preserving the affordable housing that we have, protecting what we have, building out units in this district, for example. We really need family-oriented housing where families are being pushed out. They can't afford to live here. We have a record low enrollment in our schools. That's evidence of that. And so those are, that's how I'm gonna be thinking about these things.
Okay, next up, Harvey.
Thank you, Andrew. And I think it's really important to think about the role historic preservation has played. A great example I mentioned earlier is Charis. If it wasn't for historic preservation, without preserving that building, we would have lost that building. We would have lost that place. We would have, you know, five-hundred-person, not culturally competent space that would have been run by a private landlord, and preservation helped to save that building. So I think it plays a critical role that we have to stand up for people who are fighting against our values and our interests. And that's exactly what I've done, you know, in the assembly. I've stood up to the governor, the former governor, current governor. Every time when the issues come up, it's our responsibility. Stood up against, for the mayor, against the mayor when issues that we disagree with it. So we need someone who's gonna continue to fight for this neighborhood and fight for our values. And that's it. It's about making sure that these factors are considered. But historic preservation's gotta be a part of it, because as we move forward and we think about what this community looks like, it's about if we, if we do high-rises and big buildings that are seventy-five market rate, it changes the character of our community, and we can't let that happen on its own.
Okay, then we're gonna go to Ally.
So, you know, first off, none of the people on this call were there standing with me to save East River Park, which was a Works Progress Administration park created in the nineteen thirties. I've been, I have been standing with people who are watching this call time and time again for, to stand up for the historic preservation in our neighborhoods of, of Lower Manhattan. It's also really important to be aware that for immigrants, we are an immigrant community, and we have waves. We had the Irish come in. Then we had the Germans come in. Then we had the Ukrainians come in. Then we had the Puerto Ricans come in. And now we have lots of college students who have come in and, and post, and young people. And, but we still have families. And what makes us great is that we work together, that we're diverse. But it, that's why it's super important to save every historic building that we have.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, there's obviously always gonna be competing demands. Part of being a council member is about weighing the trade-offs alongside community. And I would approach any decision about preservation or development from a perspective of place, people, and process. I think, you know, starting with place, we obviously have to protect our history. We want to protect the new, unique character of, of the neighborhoods that we're, we're seeking to represent. And I absolutely am on board with that. Again, that is a value that I share. But I also think that place is made by the people in many ways. And so making sure that this is an affordable part of the city, that the district that we want to represent is a place that anyone can call home, is important to me. And I think it's part of what makes New York different from other cities is that so many people can come and, and they can make it here. But it's getting harder and harder to do that. And so the last piece of it is process. When we're thinking about these projects, we need to make sure the community is at the center of decision-making. And I know that it hasn't always happened in the past, but that's how I would seek to lead.
Great. All right. So next question, this one's a little bit more specific. Village Preservation and, and many, many others in the community have for almost ten years now been pushing for a historic district south of Union Square, which is centered around that area's civil rights, social justice, women's suffrage, LGBTQ, and artistic history. The city has continually resisted this effort. And in the interim, we've lost buildings to luxury condos and tech office buildings. Would you support this effort? And given that the city council member, even if you do support it, does not have the unilateral power to make landmarking happen, how would you try to help to get the city to, to designate if you would support it? And I'm gonna reverse the order, and so start with Sarah.
Yes, I support the creation of that historic district. I think it's important to, to recognize the contributions of the communities that you mentioned to the area. And certainly, that history is preserved, obviously, in many of the buildings there. In terms of supporting it as council member, I think it's important to provide education and outreach to build a kind of external campaign that really fights for this landmarking. So whether that's hosting town halls or other forms of outreach, I think it's also trying to build the case for the landmarks preservation commission. Obviously, LPC, we don't know who's gonna lead the city and what their ethic will be. But we know the recent focus on equity has been certainly a focus for the LPC. So, you know, provided that that continues to be, you know, making the case that, you know, this is a matter of equity in preserving the history of our community.
Anthony, you're next.
Yeah, I support it. I do want to get to something that Harvey mentioned about Charis. For those of you uninitiated, that's an old school that was given to, over to, to private hands, to the community's hands. I don't know, Harvey, when was it, nineteen ninety-eight, I think it was? And since then, it has gone through different iterations and gone through different protests and gone through different administrations, giving contracts. I think that Sarah worked for one of them. And here we are, twenty-five years later, and nothing has happened. No one who represents the area should look at Charis and say, great job there, guys, and really expect to be taken seriously. The problem that we often have with these fights is we know what we don't want, but we never take an affirmative step for what we do want and make it happen. And we're in that place again now. People are saying, oh, it's amazing. We have a great angel who's gonna come in and do exactly what we want. No plans, no commitment, nothing solid, and we're gonna be another five years down the road. So I support the idea of planning for the area south of Union Square, but I also plan on having an affirmative plan that I fight through to the end.
Thank you very much. So next is gonna be Harvey.
Yeah, I thank you. And yeah, obviously historic preservation is a critical thing for our, our city and our community. Just to clarify the facts, Anthony has it. In nineteen ninety-nine, Giuliani sold the property to a for-profit developer who owned it for twenty-five years until the building went into bankruptcy. And then a nonprofit bought it out of bankruptcy last year. Nonprofit just acquired the building last year and is the beginning of a process, a community engagement process that we've had in multiple places where we're trying to engage the community with the future might look like, for people who actually lived here for years, understood the concerns, and want to have a historic building that comes back that provides cultural and community services. And that's what a fight is about. It wasn't the last twenty-five years of Singer owning the building. It's the beginning of last year when a nonprofit has it, and it's gonna have a plan to fundraise to bring a community institution back. And that's where we're fighting for, and that's why landmarking matters. And that's why community matters for people who've been here and care.
Ally.
So I want to put this question into context, because you've asked, you've asked me this question twice before. I want everybody on this call to be aware that Andrew is gonna hold you responsible for your answer tonight, because our current council member in two thousand seventeen said she would create, she would create a, she would landmark almost two hundred buildings south of Union Square in her support of the Union Square Tech Cup. She only, she, she did not live up to her promise. So everyone here, be aware, do not take your promise lightly. I have consistently said that I stand up for this. I don't want anyone here to be as unpopular as our current council member. And I think it's also really important to be aware that we have to save our historic buildings. Charis is a great example.
And Andrea.
Thank you for the question. So I'll, I'll answer that I obviously conceptually support this plan, but I really want to take a look, take a deep dive at every single building, every single zoning proposition. Take a look at the costs. Take a look at what is the feasibility of getting this done. You know, it's very easy to make promises, as many people have alluded to. But, you know, I really want to roll up my sleeves. And conceptually, obviously, I support this. It's a project that is about our history, about the beating heart of the labor movement that is still very much alive right now, about the queer activism that is still alive right now, and about the artistic innovation of our city that is in the crosshairs. And I think it deserves more than a plaque. It deserves real attention and thought and deliberation over how we can get this done. So, you know, while I, I conceptually support this, I want to be very realistic about what this actually means.
Thank you very much. We have a couple more of our questions, and then we're gonna go to some questions in the, in the Q and A. But so first, this question. Within the Second Council District at Fourteenth, Sixteenth, Fifth Avenue, construction work has, took place, which over two years ago threatened, damaged, and undermined two neighboring buildings, including one that had several elderly, long-term tenants, rent-stabilized tenants, who for two years have been out of their home. The city has issued virtually no penalties to the developer for doing the work there. And as I said, two years later, the folks who are there are still out of their home. And it seems very clear that the safety measures, which were supposed to be abided by, were not. We've seen this repeated with the city over and over again, where they do not hold developers accountable. And neighbors suffer. And sometimes those neighbors are not very affluent rent-stabilized tenants. What would you do to try to hold the city's feet to the fire to make sure that things like, things like this don't happen again and that there is accountability for this sort of illegal work? And this time we're gonna start with Andrea.
Well, thank you for the question. Obviously, this isn't the only example where this has happened in our, in our community, as you, as you alluded to. But from my understanding is that, you know, there really needs to be thorough, thorough vetting and processes in order to, to make sure that the safety of new buildings is being just thoroughly vetted, right? Whether that's at labor protections, the, the environmental reviews. We need to make sure we're conducting full studies on the durability, find ways to create enforcement for these landlords, whether that is, you know, increased prosecution and penalties when there are these types of instances to deter developers from conducting shoddy business. Those are just some of the things, right? But we also need to make sure in the process, when, when this is happening, that the tenants that are affected are, are receiving real help from people, from, from government officials.
Great. So next up is gonna be Ally.
So Community Board Three allowed the building at the corner of Fourteenth and Avenue C to, to buy the air rights from Campos Nycha, which in theory sounded like a great job. But unfortunately, as we've learned, as we're talking about the historic building next to it, the foundations became immediately compromised. And this happened, this has also happened on Fifth Avenue and Eighth Street. So we, so what we need to do is to pass legislation that will, like, prevent historic buildings, maybe it, from being damaged. Maybe it's saying that you can't exceed a certain height, build up past a certain height next to a historic building, so it doesn't get compromised.
Thank you. Harvey's next up.
Thank you. And, and this is something, as a former tenant lawyer, we saw all the time. We've created a coalition called Stand for Tenant Safety and talked about the problems within the side of the department building. And as the next council member, we would just have that, we have to split DOB. DOB cannot, Department of Buildings cannot protect tenants and focus on development at the same time. It is focusing solely on development, not protecting the people who are living in adjacent buildings in an agency that's got two masters and it doesn't work. Same thing with DOB and HPD related to fines. When there's a violation brought, HPD and DOB's legal team, time and time again, are meeting with lawyers, are waiving fines, waiving fines, waiving fines, and doing very little, unfortunately. That hurts regular New Yorkers. So one, you can, by splitting DOB in half, you can make sure that the tenants get protected from the agency that is focusing on the tenants. And then the people who are doing development has a totally different agency. Second, to ensure that HPD and DOB are actually enforcing fines and stiff penalties when landlords violate the law. And third, I think, I was explaining about Fourteenth Street, is a prime example of our government failing our residents.
Anthony.
Yeah, I think Harvey's got it exactly backwards. Yeah, I think Harvey's got it exactly backwards. One of the things that we should be doing is saying that if you are not doing a good job and keeping things safe as part of your work, you are going to get sanctioned as part of your development. If you're a plumber, if you're a subcontractor, if you're a developer and you're having problems over here, very often developers say, we'll take our chances. We don't care. We got five projects going at once. We have to understand that the way to really get these guys is that they know that if we screw around in this community, we're going to have problems in another community or the next time we develop something. One of the reasons these two agents, these two parts of the agency, as Harvey describes, are together is as a fulcrum that we can hold over their head. The problem is, we don't use it. For one thing, anyone who represents a community should not tolerate the idea that a problem exists for six weeks, let alone six years. And to hear the wall Charis was under, we had problems with it for thirty years, therefore vote for me, is not the kind of answer you should want from your next council member.
Okay, and then last but not least, Sarah.
I think when we look at a situation like this, again, we are, are talking a lot about symptoms and we need to get down to the root cause. The fact that there is a landlord developer that is able to push forward with any project when they already have a history of treating tenants poorly, of forcing out and harassing tenants, we shouldn't even get to the phase of them developing another property. And so I think it's important, again, as some of my colleagues have alluded to, to, to utilize penalties, to utilize the kind of stick approach of government to make sure that bad actors are weeded out. I, I think, and Harvey are probably the only people on this panel who've actually gone after bad actors, whether it's landlords or developers who have mistreated tenants, who have harassed tenants or pushed them out of their homes. And again, as the only tenant on this panel and the only rent-stabilized tenant, I think that that's something that we should be looking for in our next council member, somebody who wants to stand up for tenants.
Thank you very much. All right. So this is the final question from, from, from me. All three of the organizations that are sponsoring tonight's event have been working for a long time to try to expand landmark protections in the East Village, which is one of the city's most historically significant neighborhoods. But a lot of that history is regularly being lost and destroyed. Two specific efforts, one has been mentioned previously, the New York Eye &amp; Ear Infirmary, another is Theater Eighty. But there's many, many more layers of history in our neighborhood that we think are worthy of consideration by the city. But while about eight years ago, the Landmarks Preservation Commission said it was going to take another look at the East Village to consider expanding landmark protections there, they walked away from that process and have not come back since then. Would you, as council member, push for or work for expanded landmark protections in the East Village? And if so, what would, what would that look like for you? Both in terms of what would your advocacy efforts be like? And what would you look at or look for in terms of what you think should be landmarked? And this time, we're going to start with Harvey.
Thank you, Andrew. I think landmarking is a real, it's an engagement process with our community and really looking at the sites that are potentially landmarkable, the things that have historic significance. Bringing those to the table, sitting down at the mayor's office and Landmarks Preservation, figuring out what those issues are. That's what Rosie did, you know, when she helped us landmark Charis. And the idea was like she, we took significant buildings and we worked hard at it. I think the other thing we have to look at is who's are fighting against the historic preservation? Who, who are on the other side of that debate? And who is funding them and who's supporting them? And making sure we understand who our enemies and adversaries are in that struggle. Because if someone's fighting against historic preservation, we have to know who they are. The community needs to know how to engage with them. This is a community-driven process with amazing institutions like we have on this, a part of this panel, organize this panel. We've come together to think about this and we use their expertise and leadership to make sure we can move this issue forward.
Great. All right. Next will be Sarah.
Thank you for the question. I absolutely think that there are sites within the neighborhood where we all live in the East Village that are worthy of preservation and certainly of conversation and action. I don't know the specifics of the previous plan that you mentioned before, Andrew. Would love to hear more about the specific buildings. I know I asked EVCC and, and didn't yet hear back. Laura hadn't had the details on it. But I think when it comes to specific sites, I think looking to the community to help identify the sites that are worthy, both again, for the architectural significance and the historical significance that they have for the community. I think the best way to, you know, uncover those opportunities is, is through, you know, community outreach, town halls, conversations, you know, with folks who know the history, you know, know those sites and, and want to be the advocates on the front line and to partner with, you know, the future council member's office to achieve that. So obviously, we'd also want to work with LPC to find the viability of those sites.
Andrea.
So, um, as I mentioned before, I think, or as I alluded to before, I am coming at this race with a fresh voice and a fresh perspective. And I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on alteration applications or LPC funding or so on and so forth. That's what village preservation does, and that's what many people on this call do. But what I do know, you know, as I alluded to earlier, was that cultural preservation, to me, is everything. And be, and having people being able to afford to live here is what's going to keep our artists here, what's going to keep our families here, what's going to allow our, our diversity of cultures to be here. And so, you know, while of course, conceptually, I support the landmarking of many buildings that are beautiful and significant to the history of the village. I'm going to be looking at things in a lot of different ways, right? So like, something that comes to mind is getting down scaffolding faster. The scaffolding is covering many beautiful buildings, right? So faster we can get this done, I'm going to bring a lot of different perspectives to this conversation. So I hope that gives you an insight. Thanks.
Thank you. Ally. You're on mute, Ally.
So with the, for the rezoning, sorry, for the historic district you're talking about, for East Village, I think it's actually important to reexamine it because community, under the Adams administration, he put out a executive order last year telling all agencies to give a list of city sites that could be turned into housing. And one of the things I have been calling for, one of my passions, is the community gardens of, of my neighborhood. And I have been, so I think revisiting, what can we do to preserve, specifically to preserve the community gardens in our neighborhood is really important. I've been advocating for them to be turned into community land trusts.
Great. And last but not least, Anthony Weiner.
Thank you. Just by way of apology, tonight is Yom HaShoah Holocaust Memorial Night, so I may need to leave a little bit early, but no disrespect intended. I'll stay as long as I can. What I would probably do if I were so fortunate to be elected to this city council seat is I would do what I did the last time I was a city councilman. I treated our district as if it was a city. And what I did is I mapped the entire district. We had our own kind of mayor's management report style thing for our district. We knew where the buildings were that were abandoned, where the buildings were that had violations, where the spaces were that had community parks. And we treated it as if we represented, me, my staff, the people that helped and volunteering on boards. We acted as if we were trying to figure out the way to maximize smart things for, for our district. And what that means is it gets back to the thing I said in the opening about active over passive. Yes, one way to do this job is to sit back and see what happens and wait for thirty years until something else happens. The other way to do it is to affirmatively lean into these challenges and say, let's try to think about the community we want to have and see how we try to make that possible. And one of the ways to do that is to map the entire community for the opportunities.
Great. All right. So now we're going to shift to questions from the audience, and then that will be followed by closing statements from the candidates. So the first one that I've pulled out is somebody asked about whether or not you support a Pieta tear tax? And if you can maybe both answer that and maybe talk about if there are any other sort of related things, rather than just giving a simple yes or no answer like that, that you would pursue as a city council member. And so this time, we're going to start with Anthony Weiner.
This is my deal. I said, I proposed this when I ran for mayor. The idea is very simple. We don't have a lot of control over things. One of the things we do have is the stock, the, the real estate transfer tax we have some control over. My philosophy is very simple. If you're living in, if you're not living in a home, and particularly if you're a resident of a foreign country and you're buying something for investment purposes, that the tax on something over, say, five million dollars should be much, much higher than if you're a regular person changing properties, you know, buying a place for yourself. And that's one of the things that we can do. It's one of the things that's furiously opposed by the real estate industry, but I think it's an idea that's really hard to argue against. No doubt about it, you should be paying more in taxes if you're investing in our neighborhood as an investment than you are if you're trying to live there. And it's a way for us to get some progressivity into the tax code. Because if you're selling one two-hundred-thousand-dollar co-op and buying a three-hundred-thousand-dollar co-op, you should definitely be taxed at a lower rate than someone who is very wealthy buying something for their kid from China.
Great. All right. Next will be Sarah.
Yes, I support a Pieta tear tax. In addition, I know there are, you know, other opportunities to work with Albany to think about how we can reform some of our tax policy. Again, I think one of the things I'm most passionate about is filling vacant storefronts. I think it's a matter of safety. I think it's a matter of retail diversity, tourism, making New York City a place that people want to visit, activating spaces. And I think one of the best ways to do that is to pursue a commercial vacancy tax, which again, we would need support from our state partners to do, but I think would absolutely help the situation that we're seeing of so many vacant storefronts across the village and other parts of the city.
Great. So next will be Andrea.
Um, yes, I absolutely support a Pieta tear tax. And while Council District Two has a huge diversity of people here, our city has experienced enormous growth in millionaires and billionaires. And, you know, we have to ask ourselves the hard question, every single one of us, like, what kind of city do we want to live in? And right now, we have, you know, three hundred thousand children in our city who don't have a home. So the money that we raise from these, from Pieta tear taxes, which obviously I'm supportive of, should go directly to maintaining and building truly affordable housing, fixing the deficit that Nycha has, expanding green social housing, as some other folks alluded to. I want to expand the government capacity to, to build housing again as Nycha has, is to create avenues for people to actually enter the middle class and to end street homelessness. I know these are big things, but we have to continue to aspire to, to doing big things, so.
Great. Ally.
So yes, I do support a Pierre tax as PD's Pieta tear tax. I, I also advocate to fully fund Nycha, that we desperately are in need of low-income housing as soon as possible. And if we're, there are warehouse apartments in Nycha right now that if we renovate them, they would be, we can actually help people get out of the Homer Shulters system right now. I also want to pass legislation that the government has to subs, like, can enable small business owners storefronts to negotiate their rent down. It may mean that we have to subsidize because when you are, a lot of storefront owners have to pay the property tax in addition to paying their monthly rent. So we, it's, it's a vicious cycle that the landlord needs, needs to be addressed.
Thank you. And finally, Harvey.
Yeah, I know. So, so we have consensus on the Pieter tear tax that we all support it. We'd love to see the city move forward on it. And I think that's one of many taxes we should be talking about. We also don't have a progressive income tax for New York City residents. We need to really look at changing the income system. And, you know, we're going to need Albany to assist us with that. And I think if we can figure out how we can raise the tax rate to be on three point four four for the millionaires and billionaires that live in the city, I think we can increase starting revenue. I thought, we talked a lot about the property tax system, and the property tax system has been broken in New York. And it, it really needs to look at reforming that in a way that treats all property that is similarly situated the same. I think it's a heavy lift to try to get the city to do it and get the mayor to do it. But I work with the next mayor to look at the inequities that exist in the system now and to make sure we can fix it. Because like, really, we, if we want people to own and the goal in a city where we have majority renters, seventy percent renters, moving people into homeownership, we need to fix this tax system that's already broken. Thank you.
Great. Everybody got a chance to answer that one, right? Okay. So next one, we got a couple of good questions in there. And I just want to remind the audience, drop your questions in the Q and A if you have them, because we are going to get a few. So one question was about what is your position regarding the East River Park? And for that one, why don't we start with Harvey?
Yeah, position about flood mitigation, Andrew, or what's, what's the specific question?
I believe they're sort of assuming, I believe they're alluding to the sort of reconstruction, you know, the park, et cetera.
Yeah. So, yeah. So basically, the city went through a four-year community planning process. And there was a community board, community leaders were on board with a four-year plan. Overnight, the city changed course because they were afraid of having to deal with alienation of parkland and getting city approval and really changed the plan without community participation. I think that was a real problem. And, you know, if I was a council member, I would want a real community engagement process. I actually believe that the plan that was voted on required alienation of parkland. And I wrote a letter to the mayor's office to saying this, such that I really needed to go to get state approval. It's really, you know, I think we need to flood mitigation is critical. We, you know, a lot of public housing on the East River, we need to preserve our community. I was here when Sandy happened. I saw with the flooding that happened that impacted our community. And I think what we need to do is make sure going forward, we have flood mitigation and protect our community in a comprehensive way.
Right. Andrea.
So I, you know, I was, I somewhat agree. I, I agree that the, the, the previous mayor, Bill de Blasio, made a grievous, egregious mistake in giving us a change, changing up the plan at the eleventh hour and left many of us scrambling, trying to figure out what to do. It was a major failure of communication after years and years of community input and planning that, you know, I would have loved to see realized. But the ultimate reality is that, you know, it's a waterfront community, an environmental justice area. It needs real protection from what is inevitably going to be many more storm surges. And residents need protection and they need a park. And so me looking forward, my position is that I'm going to be looking to rebuild and heal a lot of the divisions that we experienced and look to the future of a waterfront where all people are able to use it and we're able to steward it in fully funded and effective and pleasurable ways, so.
All right. All right. Next up is Anthony.
Well, let me use this as an opportunity to ask a question that's been begged here about the role that alienation of parkland played in the chaos that ensued. And Harvey said, well, we had to go up to Albany and get permission to alienate the parkland, and that was, why? Why do we believe that a senator from Buffalo should be involved in deciding whether we alienate parkland on the East River or on Elizabeth Street or anywhere? Why? Anyone who runs for this office, their job is going to have to be fighting for local control when Albany is big-footing us. And anyone that comes down from Albany and wants a promotion to run for the city council better have an explanation for why that hasn't been their footing the entire time. One of my absolute mantras has been, we in New York City are mature enough to make these decisions for ourselves. I want the accountability. I'm never going to point at Albany and say, Albany, you know, please, please do it. I'm going to say every day, fight for the authority to come back. And I have to tell you something, anyone that runs for this office should have the same posture.
All right. Sarah, next.
As I said in, in previous questions, you know, my values when it comes to projects like this is, is place, people, process. We know that the process with this project was very, very broken. It's unconscionable that you would have a community process led by, you know, one part of the mayor's office and not have the other agencies and offices that need to be represented to provide full information to the public. So the fact that the public could come up with a whole plan, informed, you know, by our priorities and our needs in this community, and then to see that we didn't get all the information we need to make those decisions is unconscionable. And for me, as a council member, you know, moving forward, my goal is, of course, to make sure that we don't replicate a process as divisive as this one has been. You know, moving forward, we also have a responsibility to the communities that are, are make up the environmental justice community right along the waterfront, whether it's Nycha residents, seniors, you know, who've been living in the community for decades. They need to see, you know, a healthy environment. A lot of the conditions of the development has been huge problems along Avenue D.
Okay. And last but not least, Ally.
So as many people know, I, I've shared this over and over. My building was flooded during Hurricane Sandy. My daughter was six months old. My mother, who is in her seventies, was visiting us. We, we were scared, frankly. Everyone on my block, on the first floor, in the basement apartments, ground floor apartments, even businesses, lost everything. So whatever is the flood protection for East River Park is for my building, for my street, for my neighbors. It's not just the people along Avenue D. It's everybody in the flood evacuation zone that goes to Avenue B in East, in Alphabet City. And it's very clear that many of you were not in, did not participate in the government process. They were clear. It was our council member who didn't stand by our side. And it is so important to fight for our community, everyone. And it is so important to fight for our community, everyone, not divide us racially. So put aside the racial politics, all work together.
I'm going to stop you there just because we're at time. So a couple more good questions from the chat. We just have a minute for each, but some of them are sort of pretty big. First one is about NICA. How would you help solve the problems of NICA? And what are your thoughts about some of the proposals that are out there in terms of building, rebuilding, et cetera, on NICA properties? And this time I'm going to start with Sarah.
My background in city government is specifically focused on working with NICA residents and identifying solutions to the persistent crisis. We have a $70 billion need, capital need within NICA. And as a district that includes 30,000 folks who live in public housing, this is a top priority for me. I believe in resident self-determination, but I think what's happening in our district with respect to the options that are provided to NICA tenants is, is not providing them the full opportunity and education to make the right decision. Right now we have a lot of elected officials who have opposed transition of, of public housing from section nine to section eight, which is one of the strategies we have for preserving public housing. And while, you know, whether you want to do that or not, I think tenants should be provided with all the opportunities for full renovations, whether it involves transition to section eight, whether it involves comprehensive modernization or fighting for additional capital funds, which is my top priority, of course, but there's many priorities to fight for in Washington right now.
Very great. Next up, we're going to have Harvey.
So we've seen the federal government fail our public housing. It's clear that the federal funding has dried up over the last 40 years. That the people in Washington failed to fight for it. But that doesn't mean on the city council, we can't. I mean, we need to feel, make a real commitment, a deep commitment in the capital funding for NICA. You know, as Sarah just said, we have a $7 billion, $70 billion deficit in capital needs of NICA. That means we need to over time build back our public housing developments and put real capital dollars that we have in our city and ask the state to do the same to ensure that we fix up our public housing. And that requires a real commitment. And that's something that I will push for in the city. I pushed for that in Albany. We've gotten billions of dollars for, for NICA, exactly what we need to do in the city level as well. And when that capital dollar comes, to ensure that it comes to make long-term improvements, energy efficient improvement to improve public housing and resident engagement is a critical component of it. Making sure people understand what's happening, are part of the process and are educated. That's what I've done. I'm committed to doing going forward as the next council member.
Andrea.
So, um, thank you for the question. Can't be understated how big of a population NICA and public housing residents are in Council District Two. And, you know, there is, like my colleague said, this is an enormous, enormous deficit. And there is going to need to take every single level of government. Obviously, right now, the federal government isn't something we can count on. So we really have to double down in the city and state to step up to meet this moment. And of course, we need to, we need to fund this deficit, but we also need to conduct oversight and investigation and continue to look at NICA's operations. Even if we were to fully fund NICA, we would, we would still be having enormous amounts of institutional problems within NICA's governance system. So we, the council person really needs to take a look at that and look at how it's affecting local leaders or local residents. I could go on a lot longer about this, but I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Anthony Weiner.
Hey, everyone has to snap out of it a little bit. I think we're, we're whistling past the graveyard. Have you heard about what the Trump administration is going to do with HUD? No, because we haven't told us yet. It is going to be a debacle. It is going to be a headache. And one of the things that all of the people who are listening to this, who are voters in District Two, have to start thinking about is one of the primary jobs of the next council member is going to be fighting like heck on behalf of New York City and fighting like heck against Donald Trump. Now, I come to this uniquely prepared. I have basically made a profession of fighting with Republicans. And I have to tell you that one of the things that we have to keep in mind is that we can have the finest plans in the world about how administrative changes we may have to, we may have to make. And HUD will just get in the way. I would not be at all surprised if they don't even appoint a HUD administrator for our region, let alone staff it. So one of the things we need to think about when we want to think about how we fight for our neighbors is how we are going to fight against this administration in Washington. Cause at least for our first term, or at least a good part of it, we're going to be fighting against Donald Trump every day. And that's my middle name.
All right. And last but not least, Ally.
So of course I want to fully fund NICA. There are 17 NICA developments in Council District Two. And I would want to, and we can use funding from city council. We can use $5 million to start funding the repairs of the NICA developments in Council District Two on the first day that the next council member, which will be me, gets into office. And I will start with Jacob Rees houses because I don't know if anyone knows, but they still have polluted, dirty water. People there are using bottled water to brush their teeth, to take showers. That's unacceptable in the 21st century. And you know what? Then you network. You work with our other elected officials at state level, at the federal level to say, give me your discretionary funding to take care of your constituents. That's how we start. We lead by example.
Okay. All right. Great. I think we have time for one more question from the audience and I'm going to read it. It says here, religious sites within the East Village and elsewhere in the city are often very significant architecturally, historically and culturally. Preservationists often look to preserve and protect these buildings. Congregations who look to demolish their buildings often cite the challenges of maintaining them with limited funds and how religious freedoms should allow them to freely pursue their missions. How do you think this tension could or should be resolved or addressed? And this time, Ally, we're gonna, hold on, I'm gonna start with you, but I have to pull the timer down. Sorry about that. I don't know why it didn't come down on its own. Here we go. Okay, you can start.
Okay. This is a great question because it actually impacts our district significantly, especially our neighborhood that all of us live in. The, right now, we have churches that are for sale. We have a synagogue that's for sale. But we can be innovative. There is this synagogue that was turned into condos. I believe it's on eighth, either Seventh Street or Eighth Street between Avenue C and Avenue D. There is another synagogue that was turned into condos. I believe on Sixth Street between First Avenue and Avenue A. So there is, there are ways to not raise a building and to be able to save the architecture features, but turn it into something else. And understandably, because of the Catholic Church, they are, they do have to sell their buildings to unfortunately pay for lots of lawsuits because they hurt tons of million, tens of thousands of children. And so that would be my way to support it is by reinventing buildings.
All right. I'm going to stop you there. So the next will be Andrea. There we go.
Okay. So I was just trying to like double check the, the question here. I think it, trying to understand it. I think it's a difficult question. The historic fabric, the architectural features that we hope to preserve. I think we're trying to understand kind of like how to do that in the context of some churches who are, or some religious sites that are having challenges maintaining their, their buildings. Is that, is that correct?
Yes. And that sometimes cite that religious freedom should allow them to, you know, demolish if they, if they want to. How do you try to address those tensions?
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I would answer it just kind of on a case by case basis. Obviously, you know, like Middle Collegiate Church comes to mind. We're all heartbroken by, by the loss of that space. And that's not necessarily a, a function of, of funding or any, any sort of thing. But again, just tarkening back to listening to the communities and trying to support however I can. Yeah.
Anthony.
I'm sympathetic to what churches, the, the needs of churches. We, we suffer when a parish school closes. We suffer when a church closes. So I, I support giving them the opportunities to get benefits from their footprint of their, of their church, the air rights over their church with, in some kind of a premium way that they can sell it and transfer it for someone else who might as a source of revenue. I think it is more than just losing a shop when you lose a church. It's more than just losing an institution when you lose a parish school. I think our, our school, our, our city is worse for it. As a, as a Jewish kid who grew up across from a Catholic church, you know, I can tell you that it's the kind of thing that makes our community what it is today. And when the Catholic church went through its wave of school closings, I was among the first to stand up and say, we should try to be supportive of providing ways to preserve those churches, those synagogues, those mosques. They really are what make our community great. And so I would support giving them added incentives, but they don't have a First Amendment right to build anywhere, but they certainly do have a right to survive. And I would help them do that.
Sarah.
I agree that houses of worship are more than just places to worship. They're community centers. And I think a lot of what we're seeing in our country right now, the divisiveness is because of the loss of many of these institutions. I support opportunities for faith-based institutions to, you know, redevelop their sites. I think when adaptive reuse is, is possible, we should support it, of course, but sometimes it's not always feasible. And sometimes the cost is too great. I think of, you know, an example that Village Preservation was very active in, that I'm, you know, currently supporting. There's a synagogue on Sixth Street between First and A. I've been working with one of the residents of Village View over there to help support a co-naming of that street in honor of her father, who was the rabbi of that synagogue. And that was a great example of an adaptive reuse project that's happened in the village. I think there's opportunities like that, but when there aren't, we should also think about the other needs of the community, whether it be housing or other services that the community needs.
Great. So we just have time for closing statements. Okay. Hold on. Get rid of this here. And so that's going to be a minute for everybody.
Andrew, I didn't get that, but if you want to go to closing, that's fine.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm.
I just don't want to, I don't want to. Yeah, no, thank you. Yeah. No, I just want to, I, I think what we're saying about building, building is really an important piece because whether the church is stark or not is a good question. And the other question we have to decide is what the potential use will be. You know, example, the same Emirates site on 12th Street, you know, convincing our guys just to have a plan to build permanently affordable housing because they were closing that place is really critical. But if we were losing a site because they want to demolish the building, the church wants to make money off it, that's a really different question than to keeping the house of worship open and to build something around it. I think the, each real plan is very different. I think if it's in the context of what we're preserving versus what we're losing, those are the conversations. We need deeply affordable housing for people who are middle class and working class. And those are critical needs in our community. And if a church wants to provide that and give back to our neighborhood, I think we really should be open to that as long as we are not losing some kind of historic structure that we care deeply about in our community.
Great. Okay. Sorry. Again, apologies about that. Thank you for speaking up. So we are going to now do closing statements for everybody. And thank you all for your participating and staying to the end. So everybody's going to get a, a minute and I'm going to start with Andrea.
Sounds great. Thank you all so much again for having me. And thank you to all the sponsoring organizations for putting this together. It's an honor to be here. And as I mentioned, I'm Andrea Gordillo. I'm running to be your next city council member. Cause I really believe we can protect what makes our neighborhood special. We can build a future that works for everybody. And together we have been working to preserve our history of activism, our culture of our resistance, our immigrant roots, our artists and our workers that have always made this place come alive. But, you know, the history is under threat by unchecked development, by displacement and decisions that are made without us. And I'm running because we need fresh leadership. As I mentioned, the old same old political conventions aren't working for us. And I'm your neighbor. I'm your longtime community advocate. I have a plan to protect what we love about the city, our diverse community and our cultures, while at the same time, fighting for the changes that we need to ensure that the New York that we know and love is still possible for everyone, whether you've been here for generations or you just arrived.
Great. All right. Next we'll hear from Anthony Weiner.
Hey, so this is a job interview and I'm applying for the job. And what I would say is I've got the experience. I've done this job before, that I've got the record of kind of being tough in the times you needed to. But I think the thing that we should keep in mind this year, perhaps more than any other time, is that you're going to need a certain type of elected official now. In this era that we are in, where the laws of political gravity seem to be shifting beneath our feet, where you might have an Andrew Cuomo as mayor and you might have a Donald Trump as, as president. The challenge is going to be, who do you want to be engaging in that fight? We could all say the things that we want. We can all express values in the minute. And by the way, doing minute answers is just not fair to anybody. But I think you should be also asking what type of a person? You might say, you know, that guy Weiner, I like him, but for his scandal, maybe it's the stuff I've been through, the toughness that I've shown, the ability that I'm standing here after making my amends, accepting responsibility is exactly the kind of fighter we need in a moment like this. And I do hope you'll agree and forgive me in advance for having to step out. I got to run to this thing. But, and I want to thank my colleagues also and no disrespect intended to them.
Thank you very much. Harvey.
Thank you, Andrew. I really want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. It's really to talk about our future of our community. And people are here because they care deeply about what our neighborhood is going to look like, how it's going to be. And the person who gets elected this June is likely to hold that seat for probably eight years and a lot of change can happen. And these times that are really difficult, you want someone who understands how city hall works. You want to understand who someone has a relationship with Albany. You want to make sure that you have someone who's going to stand up and fight for our community and fight for our values. And that's me. I've been doing this work, lived in this neighborhood 30 years, raised my kids in this community and understand the issues and fought for these issues. Whether it's about preservation, I've stood up to fight for preservation. It's about building affordable housing. I know the pressures to do that. It's about defending tenants. I've done that. You're standing with our community when issues are tough, time and time again. I stood with our neighbors to fight for what we believe in. The future needs to be someone who stands and fights and believes in what we stand for and will be here for our future. I'm that person. I hope this work shows that I should earn the support this June.
Thank you very much. Ally.
You need to get that. Um, so I may come across as not a great public speaker and I may, but I am a fighter. I have been fighting for the preservation of our city's historic character, our parks, our community gardens for years. I have found people who are afraid to do what it takes to save our city, our Lower Manhattan, but I have. I've been, I've, I've stood by to help save Elizabeth Street Garden. I also fought to save the East River Park and advocate for a more sustainable flood protection plan, which I still do today. We were forward thinking that we needed to save that park because we need, because we're going to get more air pollution because of congestion pricing. But I am the res, I am, will be the representative who stands and collaborates with my neighbors, you who are on this call, as well as everyone all around our city. Thank you.
Great. And the final word will be from Sarah.
Thank you so much to our sponsors, Less B, EVCC and Village Preservation. Thank you to all of you for turning, tuning in and sharing your questions with us. I, you know, I'm excited to be running, to be part of the next generation that's bringing bold leadership to city hall and really addressing the most persistent challenges in our city. Again, not just by addressing symptoms, but also by looking at root causes. I'm, you know, honored to be in this race. I would be honored to represent all of you. And again, we may not always agree, but like a family, we'll share the same values that again is people, place, process. I, I believe in all of those things truly as somebody who has worked in government, as the only one now here, now that Anthony has left, who's actually worked in city government. I have oftentimes had to deal with the trade-offs that we've been talking about all, all night long. And I know that that's what the job of the council member will be. So I want to work with community to make sure that we're having community-driven discussion and that the decisions I make reflect the needs of the diversity of our community. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you to all of our candidates for their participation. Sarah Batshu, Harvey Epstein, Andrea Gordillo, Ally Ryan and Anthony Weiner. Thank you to East Village Community Coalition and the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative for cosponsoring. Thank you to all of you for attending and do go to the chat to get the link. If you want to register for the upcoming pro, upcoming candidate forums or watch the past candidate forums on Manhattan Borough President and Mayor. Educate yourself, be engaged, and thank you so much for your participation. Have a very good night, everybody.